I am going to call the meeting to order. Al cannot be with us tonight. He and his wife are both sick. And Natasha couldn't be with us tonight either. So be kind to Patrick. Patrick is going to take the notes for us this weekend. Okay. So with that, is there anyone, any member of the public who wants to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move right into the consent agenda then. I can't quite read that. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the meeting minutes from February 18th, the approval of warrants, the approval of leave for John Dowman, who is a culinary arts instructor at CTE, approval of the professional appointments of Colleen Legree to be a fifth through eighth grade math teacher in Westford, replacing Leheen Liechtenstein, and Jamie McCarthy for a temporary position as a fifth grade classroom teacher at Founders Memorial, replacing Sarah Hyack. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed say nay. So Brian, you want to tell us quickly about the banking resolution?
The banking resolution removes Kathy Baron and adds Heather Bushy so that she can manage, in this case, the business card agreement authorization because it's one of the things that we're working on right now. So it's just a process. We'll probably have some more of these as we go through Credit Union One and some others. But I'd be happy if the board feels more comfortable tableing it until the next meeting. We can do that as well.
That sounds fine. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve the banking resolution to change the signatory from Kathy Baron to Heather Bushy. Is that right? Okay. Someone make the motion?
So moved.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. All right. Next up is town meeting day and statewide updates. Anybody want to talk about taking budget materials to town meeting day?
Sure. I'll go for it. Martha and I diligently sat outside at the beginning of our meeting in Westford. Very few inquiries and very few took any materials that we had available. Not sure what that signifies, but on the high point, there was 63 attendees, which was double last year's attendance at the informational meeting. So I'm not sure the trend in the next day. There was a lot of record voting as well because of the primary attached. But there was, again, very, not very many people sought information. There was a few that did take what we handed out, but on the whole, not that many picked up flyers or whatnot. So not sure what that signifies.
Liz?
And in the, Kelly and I were both at the town. We had a lot of people stop by us first because it was friendlier than where they were going for the other things that were on the town. It was here, so we were a friendly face before hitting the fire, quite honestly. And Robin is here maybe as a result of us being there. I don't know. You don't have to speak. I know you're here to watch. But we did have, I like to say for these things, that even just being there, it's more qualitative than quantitative. Measuring it by the number of people is not, in my opinion, always the best way to measure having presence. And I still think, since this was our first round of trying this, I think we will get better at it. At our communications meeting, we talked about doing more of a sandwich board and sort of professionalizing our appearance with a banner with our vision and, you know, sort of if we're going to be doing it, some takeaways from how we did it. So I think it was worth it. And yeah, also same, the numbers of people who actually took the materials. We could probably print half the numbers of copies. But we, I, we'll get to it later, but I still think it's, I do think our plan to go forward with the events that we have signed between now and the vote, I think it will be good to have a presence.
Kelly?
Yeah, I would just add that increasing visibility is one thing, but also showing up at a lot of these things, then people might get used to. This is a way that I can bring a comment to the school board is I'm going to see them if I go to any big area event. And just to add, like, there was a bigger controversy, like town meeting day. That's what everyone was thinking about. So as we get closer to the budget date, we might get tougher questions about our actual budget.
Yeah, certainly people were focused on the budget at hand, which was the municipal budget. And many, many people didn't even, I have to come back and vote, which is a problem that all, many of us are aware of in our community. And moving forward, I have great hope that we're going to solve that problem. And then we'll see some changes in this also, I think.
I agree with that. And statewide, there were nine budget defeats. I think at least three of them were related to other proposals as opposed to the budget itself. Two of them controversial budget proposals and one controversial reconfiguration of school proposals. Budgets so far have come in under what the tax commissioner's letter anticipated, but I haven't seen anything yet in terms of a proposal for changing the yields. I would expect that House, the House will have to vote something out by the end of March. But that's going to be pretty close to the time we vote. And some people will have already voted, but we, if we get new information, we should take advantage of that in terms of updating our projections. So Brian, Beth, is there anything else that you contemplated talking about under this section?
Not necessarily for the town meeting day, no. Well, we did, oh, well, that comes with the annual meeting and planning for that, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's coming up.
That's it.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the student report then. Laura and Tilly?
Yeah, so we don't have any really updates as of now. We met with students at ADL about a month ago.
Yes. Yeah, middle of February, I think. And the meeting went really well. It was really good. The students appreciated us coming there and we walked away with some things to do and we were going to see what came of Westford and EMS. We were supposed to meet with Westford right after that, but then we had a snow day and it kind of shifted us out a month and a half, unfortunately. So, and EMS, we're still trying to arrange a time. Yeah. So as of right now, nothing hard to report, but yeah, we're still doing the meetings with the middle schools.
Want to talk about your participation in the principal search?
Yeah, sure. So we're going to be part of the committee on Friday, this Friday, and we're going to work on like making questions and kind of like how the process is going to go. I'm not exactly sure what the format's going to look like as of now, but so we'll both be at that meeting and then we'll be present for the actual interviews.
Tilly, did you figure out your time? I don't want to pressure you and it's okay if you don't go on Friday.
I think I'll be able to, but I just have to check with my teachers.
You can pop in and out too if it's in the building.
Yes, I will at least try to do that.
Okay. All right.
Did they already talk about the student retreat at the board table?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was at, yeah, that was a couple of meetings ago, I think.
I couldn't remember if we had a meeting since we had that follow-up meeting.
You can talk about the follow-up.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had a meeting since follow-up.
Oh, yeah. So after the student retreat, which was focused around equity for EHS students, we kind of had a follow-up meeting with Erin and Liz and a bunch of, and Beth and other adults in the district about like what, about next steps. So me and a group of students and Laura, we all came up with, this is what we took away from the meeting. This is what we think that our school and our district needs to do to move forward with this issue. So the main focuses were about like education on some of the issues, like in schools, so curriculum changes, and then also hiring processes. And yes, those are the main, and then like more presentations and stuff about the issues. But those are the things that we kind of came together and decided we want to move forward with.
Any questions or comments from board members about the report?
I'm not a board member, but I have some. The retreat follow-up meeting, the students did an amazing job facilitating us through great activities and they guided the whole, like really facilitated the conversation with adults. It was phenomenal.
Yeah, and Kayla Adyen took the lead on that and just shout out to her and the work that she's done in leading that, in leading that particular meeting and in herding cats to get everybody back together. And she's charged me with the next meeting because it was really wonderful to see all these, all these kids and all, and adults, adults who have spent a lot of time thinking about these things and talking about them, saying, okay, we've talked enough. Now it's time for action. And the mood, and the mood in the room is really geared towards action now. So we all came away excited to see what was going to come next and we'll schedule the follow-up according to your availability. So let's make that happen. So thanks to all of you for a part of that. It's really, it's really great work.
Excellent. Okay. Any last comments or questions? All right. Thank you. We look forward to hearing back from you after you finally go to Westford and EMS. All right. We need to approve the academic calendar for 2020-21. Beth, you can remind us why we have to do this.
So according, what you're really approving are the amount of days that students go to school. It is a regional calendar that's set by the Chippewa County Superintendents for, really it goes to CTE so that we have common days sending students to a regional program. Doesn't always work quite as neatly as we start in June because people have parent conferences on different days. But I do have to say that in the, this is my third one going, that we are more common than we have been in the past. Not many people went from what we set as a region, which is great. And I really followed and tried to figure out, and I met with the union over it as well, they're set and happy with it. So that's the process. And then as to you for the final approval about the amount of student days, but also to share with you. And then we send it, once that's done, we send it into the HTE. And it gets reformatted by my center, I know, but they take it and then make it adaptable to the web and not color-coded because not everybody can say colors. So I will walk you through each month just because it is different. The reason, as I explained, the reason why it is different is really because of September 7th, Labor Day is late. So it really threw off the calendar. And one of the things we debated as superintendents, do we start on Wednesday the 2nd, which really put us into the fourth week in March? And some schools actually would have been in July, the days that they have to fulfill.
In June.
I mean, June.
Yeah.
Right through June and then.
And then into July.
Yes, so into the first week. So we will begin on a Thursday and we'll start with August. So we will come back and have five in-service with teachers, which is pretty normal to begin on a Thursday. We normally have school that starts on Wednesday. We had, we have a national speaker that works through Solution Tree and all the work that we're doing with the professional learning communities. We have a national speaker coming in on the 25th, which is Tuesday. He speaks about culture. He's very energizing and inspiring every time somebody, anybody sees him there. It's phenomenal. He's coming to Vermont to us on the 25th. We had asked teachers to work with us to, in the contract, they, in the contract, it says they have the day before school starts in their classroom. That was a hard move for us to make. They did not, they wanted to continue with a day in their classroom before school started. A lot had to do with ice cream socials and other things that the leadership team was very willing to move, but it, it's hard. Change is hard. So the leadership team decided in Essex-Westford that we would start on Thursday. And that has our national speaker come in and then teachers will have their day in the classroom on Wednesday. It's kind of a messed up calendar anyways because of Labor Day being so late. So now we have a two-day week, then a four-day week, I mean, a two-day week, a five-day week and a four-day week, which usually we go three, four, five, but it's just, it's the way it is. Do you have any questions about that start date or it's different? It was approved by the superintendent today. There's another school that's looking at a different day, so.
And each month records the number of student days, the number of staff days, and then starts to run a key motive.
Right. So September's pretty normal, jumped down to October. Normally in our calendar, Essex-Westford School District has had Wednesday night, if you look at it in a typical, it would have been Wednesday the 14th. Wednesday night would have been parent conferences, all-day Thursday for, with no school, and then for students, parent conferences on the 15th and then 16th would have been no school. The regional superintendents, and one of the reasons why it's moved around is I had a lot of people, the regional superintendents decided that to go with the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Indigenous People's Day. And then the, that would have put us with that day and then the 16th off and Thursday off. That didn't make sense. So we are moving our parent-teacher conferences to the night of Thursday evening and then all-day Friday. So students will have a four-day weekend. Staff, teachers will have a three-day weekend. So we moved it up to make it, so we're not off and then off again. Just made it kind of inconsistent. And that will help CTE as well because most schools were taking the ninth off as well. Not necessarily for parent conferences, just off and made a four-day weekend. It often, I've spoken to you before in previous years about that, break in October is really good for students as well as staff. It's a, it's a wellness break that people need. In November, November 3rd is off for Election Day. We are polling places and I think it, that was a decision made by any of the districts that had a polling in their schools. November 23rd will be, and 24th are in-service days. The 23rd, we have another national speaker coming in. These are grant-funded around professional learning communities as well, which is exciting. December is the winter break. Not really any different. And then January, yeah, so yeah, Friday's the first, which we will be off. And then go two weeks. And the Martin Luther King Day this year, we tried a half a day. That was brought to us by the leadership team in trying to fit another student day in. People want, felt like we are a school of, or a district of equity if we should really try to look to have that day off. This year it worked. I can't guarantee that forever. Try to fit days in, but that'll be a day off for everybody. Yep, that was regional as well. Yeah, there may be a school here and there that take it. It depends on how many days. It's one of the ones we call non-common day, but it looks like most were going with that. Then February break, we are back to just one week to fit the days in. I had some pushback about town meeting day that we should have been in school, Monday, Tuesday, so we get about half-half. Yes.
I am totally supportive of either having town meeting day off or not, but going back and forth every year.
Yeah, I agree.
We're just going to anger more people every time.
Yes.
So if we could pick one and stick with it, I think that would be advisable.
I think this is the one that will be picked and stuck with.
Was that, again, just to know the.
Yes. It is, it is regional. The larger schools go with this way.
With not having town meeting day off, how will that affect the employees that want to attend their individual town meetings? Will the requests be honored?
They do have that in their contract right now that they can request it. Yep.
No, I'm just looking at my pen.
We also looked, we also looked at this year to have it off, knowing that it was primaries and thinking about all the elections and everything happening. That was, yeah. And I'm glad we did.
Yes.
Absolutely. So maybe in another four years, we'll have to do it again. I don't know.
So we'll, we'll do some advanced planning to look to see if we can park people in other places, make the polling, like, you know, we, I think we can, we know what day it's going to happen and we can be planful about trying to make it work. But it's, I think it's a, it's tough to lose those two school days when we're trying to also measure how deep we go into June when really we're managing a thousand people voting over the course of 12 hours. So I think we can handle it.
Seth and Hen?
Having school and having town meeting from my other chair is perfectly fine, just as long as the voters, there's some way of saying that there's a voter parking. Yep. Possibly in some of the handicap spots or something because I know that we only use, usually use like two, two out front when I've been here, when school has been in session. And so if there's a temporary, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we've discussed that.
It may, there's been some discussion about approaching the board of civil authority about could it be, could the voting happen in the rink? We have way more handicap infrastructure in front of the rink and parking infrastructure that isn't assigned and there might be some possibilities. It's all elevator accessible and everything. So again, let's plan on having it be done really great, but have it be a school day.
Well, let me know when you'd like to have that discussion.
Okay.
March 19th would be parent conferences off. Then April's pretty much the same. The rest of the calendar, May is Memorial Day and then June. So the potential last day would be the 14th for students. We, we are going to work on how we figure out to put actual snow days on the calendar as potential. So that 14th is 178 days. The orange one on the 15th would be the 189th day for teachers. So we will mark potential snow days because people will take that and then plan a vacation for the 15th.
Starting the 16th.
Yeah. Staff included, so.
I know we haven't historically done it, but do you as superintendents talk about approximate graduation dates and?
So this one talked about would actually be on the 19th.
Yeah.
Which is a year later.
And again, was that common or are they?
Yeah, that's what's, yeah, that's what's discussed. Yeah.
And if that, is that something you would feel comfortable putting on the calendar?
I know you and I have had this conversation. I would like to put it on, so I will have the conversation with the high school.
I think families would probably be really appreciative and probably parking. I'm sure Park and Rec at least seeing that that Monday is the last day of school is not going to start their camps that week. You know, they are planning, everybody's planning.
Everybody plans.
Their staff is the student.
I have camps calling me like a daily basis. What's your last day of school?
I'm sure.
They start in January.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the calendar?
Fiscal year 20 count, no, fiscal year 20 calendar. Not that's 21.
No, this one.
Okay.
So who, okay. So entertain a motion that we approve the 178 student days as presented for the 2021 school year. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Now we have to talk about the last day of school for this year.
That's why I have the other calendar.
That's why you have today. So we are, we actually had four snow days or weather days because October was, October 31st was not a snow day. It was a flood day. So our original day to start, this is what you just looked at before, is the marked last day, the 178th day before any weather days was June 12th. Never put it on a Friday because you end up with days anyways. And then we had four snow days, which would bring students here until the 18th of June. Staff would make up their 189 days, which would bring them, this year they have two day, three days on the end. So it would bring them, it was like the 23rd or 24th, I can't remember. But the proposal is to bring, to have students and their last day on the 17th, which would be 177 days. Staff would be here Thursday, teachers would be here Thursday, Friday and Monday, the 22nd. One of the reasons why we're proposing this is we have Beyond Diversity Training that's willing to come in in June. They want the days as soon as possible. It's one of the reasons why it's coming to you now as well. And two consecutive days is the best way to do that. The training is not for the entire district. The plan is to, over time, train everybody, but they take, I think 50, 50 teachers at a time. And Erin is actually working on having two sessions, so it would be more than that. But we're also waiting with the coronavirus in California to see if they can come. But right now, it's planned for the 18th and 19th. Then teachers would have a weekend and then come back, clean up their classrooms and do the last things at school on the 22nd. But it does need two consecutive days. That's why you can't do it from Friday to Monday and split the, we'd also be paying for people to be here over a weekend from California.
Questions? Brent?
So what would our contingency plan be if we need to? So what would our contingency plan be if we need to cancel school for the coronavirus?
It's a really good question.
Would we go into July?
I think that is really, um, you can apply for waivers, there's other things that can happen. Um, if we, we have talked about the possibility, if we have to do that, how do we do online learning? How can we keep students learning? Yeah, the conversations with the agency continue.
Depending upon when a course of events happens, there's April break. I mean, the, the state just sent out the information that you have what we have with regards to it, so, and there's a good chance, depending upon how events happen, that we're not in the control of whether schools close or not, so, and then we're not in control in whether those days have to be made up. And so, you know, there, there's a matter that we'll just need to work in unison, probably through the V S B A, as well as the V S A, to try to deal with an event that has never been experienced. I could tell you that our buildings become increasingly more difficult to hold quality instruction as we get to the end of June, and certainly in July and August. So there may be that sense that, you know, we, we have to look at the value and impact of instruction, not just the number of hours.
Can I ask whether, um, Agency of Education directives about school closure and dismissal would apply only to public schools, or also to daycare providers, private schools, and other education providers in Vermont?
I would think the Department of Health would step in, so the Department of Health and the Agency of Education are working side by side, that's what we're told, met today. Um, Department of Health was at our meeting. Um, so they're trying to do much together as possible and to get notices out at the same time. We, the agency would not have any say over daycares. Um, that would be, have to be a Department of Health, but I can imagine that it would be the same. But I only...
Do they govern private schools?
Yeah, they, they have, everything they've done right now, independents and private schools are all in the same information loop as we are. I'm not sure about authorities, but, again, the Department of Health would trump the Secretary of Ed at that point, if something was closed for preventative reasons.
Some of our alternative, our alternative schools that we use for our students usual, will close when we do, and things like that. So they follow, tend to follow a public school's calendar.
Originally, when this calendar came forth, it was a hundred and seventy-eight student days.
Correct.
And then we locked off, yeah. One seventy-four because of the school closings, is that what I understood?
Nope, so if you take the Friday, June twelfth would be a hundred seventy-eight days. You add four to it, which would be Thursday, June eighteenth, and, but I'm asking for Wednesday, June seventeenth.
Seventeenth, so we'll come down to one seventy-seven.
So it would be a hundred seventy-seven days.
Right, and is it the minimum, if I'm not mistaken, was one seventy-five per state?
One seventy, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, graduation on Saturday, June twentieth.
Yes.
Just wanna make it clear that it is possible to request and receive a waiver for the number of student days, right?
Correct.
We've done, yeah. Other questions?
I could just say to that, I think they have to be approved by the State Board of Ed, and I asked for our upcoming meeting that we have some guidance from the A O E, so there's consistency in how that'll happen.
I think it's important for people to know it's not, it's not foregone, it's definitely not, if schools close for a week or two, that it's definitely gonna be extended.
Right, right.
I have to imagine they'll provide a template of how to go about this.
And I actually can't imagine schools closing here and there. I would think a region either will make the decision, and I think that's why it's kind of going through the agency, or, as I say, our state is so, seventy-five thousand students is a district someplace else, so that have closed, so.
Yeah. Okay. Can I just confirm?
Yep.
Um, had we said before the graduation was definitely the thirteenth? I thought you had said that before. Is it now the twentieth?
It's the twentieth. I don't think we ever said definitely. It was always tentative. It was tentative when the calendar...
The thirteenth, right?
I do think it was tentative.
I feel like you looked and all the others are that weekend of the thirteenth.
I haven't.
I think it's just because it said twelve, that the thirteenth was, we, I don't think we ever said that was definite.
I think Beth may have said it.
I may have said it.
Oh, you did?
Um, because we looked at the area schools who had declared their date already.
Oh, 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 okay, sorry.
Graduation is, um, has been scheduled for the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
It may, we can check in, I mean, it's a, it's a school decision made in conjunction with area principals, so it doesn't have anything to do with the school calendar, I understand, the sensitivity to it, and have lived that experience, but, so it's not something that's approved or set by the board.
Okay, sorry.
And even the administration, and Beth and so forth defer to the regional principals.
Okay, so what we have to vote on is the last day of school being the seventeenth. Andre and Diane.
Um, I guess what I've seen in the past, and I'll ask a question again, has there been any pushback from extending the school year beyond what initially was started? Because I, I'm sure that questions come up, why can't we make up the days earlier in the school year rather than close later in June? And I, I'm just wondering, because this has been somewhat the practice for many years.
Right, right.
And then the other question, that'll field, is if we close C T E, but the other sending schools per se do not, how does that impact? Okay, thank you.
I'm taking guidance from the Agency of Education, that, from Department of Health, and if they tell us to close, we'll close, and I don't know.
All right, but as far as, has there been any...
As I said, I can't imagine, I can't imagine a region closing more than a school. I know you heard on the news that Williston closed, that was to do a deep clean.
Sure.
They didn't have the Monday and Tuesday that we did, because they went right back to school.
So I think the, the key element here that's brand new is, and it's in the guidance that was just sent out, the idea of a preemptive closure.
Yeah.
That, um, other communities have done, which by their nature are extensive, to try to create a window to suppress the spread of...
Sure.
So no one in the state that I'm aware of, even during previous outbreaks and pandemics, had we considered preemptive closure for that time period. So that, that would be only be done through consultation with the Department of Ed. The selective ones, if we had a case in which we had high symptoms or high there, we may have a school closure for a period of time, but it, it wouldn't be for an extended, and then we'll probably be back here and to the, to the board, the state board, to try to navigate these extenuating circumstances.
Right, in response to the first question, as far as inquiries made as to whether, uh, pushing the last day later into June versus making up the days earlier in the school year.
You mean like over April vacation or something?
Or something like that, yes. I mean, I, this has been the practice, it's been common throughout the years that I've been on the board, is always extend the end of the year, but not make up during the year.
I think you have families and teachers that take vacation. I mean, families is one thing, but then we would have staff out as well.
Yes.
Um, we would have to make, determine that, like, way early in the year. If we had a, a flood day that lasted five days, we might have done that.
Sure.
From October and not about April.
Thank you.
We actually talked about it, like, if we keep getting more snow days, what are we going to do? We even talked to the union about it.
Okay, so I feel like we're getting bogged down in some pretty administrative stuff.
But just one second.
I have Diane and then Liz. Okay.
Um, so do we have a C T E graduation date then?
Yeah, I'd have to check the calendar.
Okay.
I, I was just on and confirmed that South Burlington's graduating on Friday the twelfth at St. Michael's, and I know they've had three snow days, so they'll either do something with graduating seniors, or finals, or something, but they're locked into a, probably a site rental that they can't change.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and that shows that C V U is usually the Thursday beforehand, and, and so that's usually the stagger.
They do that last two-week immersive independent study thing, so, um, they maybe are able to accelerate that project line or something.
And we usually proceed, C T E graduation is usually within the Thursday or Wednesday of the schedule.
Right, right before the Saturday.
Yeah, it's usually like, yeah.
But I'll confirm.
It's usually one of the middle schools graduations. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are we ready to vote? So, um, entertain a motion that we approve June seventeenth as the last day of school for students.
No move.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Opposing, eh? Thanks. Okay, Beth is going to update us on the principal search.
Yes, so this was not in the packet, but it is two pages. So one says Essex High School, and one says Thomas Fleming. Okay, so when you pass it around, that's what you'll, they're kind of separated. I just have to grab mine, because I might, like, copy or ran out of staples. Oh, I shouldn't pick half of them, no.
Two pieces.
Two pieces. If you want to see, I, you did have the information in your materials, but if you do want a packet of what Nezdek put together and the job description, you're welcome to that. I've had some questions about that, so I did make a, print out copies, if you want to see it. Does anybody want a printed copy? Anybody in the audience want a printed copy?
Stick, stick them on your chair. Come on, see.
So Nezdek put together, is the company we're using for the search? It's a New England company, so I, um, we did work with them, and they came and did, um, different forums. They had a parent forum, a student forum, and a community forum. The student forum and the community forum were not well-attended. Tilly and Laura have lots of information in this from students, um, and we knew that it would be difficult to get people to come to those anyways. The staff one was very well-attended, and there were, um, around sixty staff members that went, and they received a lot of information from them. Um, and then there was also a survey that went out. Um, I did put information, because I had, um, some people wondering how it was advertised. You, as a board, already received that, how it was publicized, how it was advertised, to go to a website, but I put it in this report again for you to see, to make sure that it was, uh, national and sent, um, I actually received, just to show you, I received these emails, I, um, from Nezdek for superintendent, not that I'm searching, superintendent and principal, it's because I belong to it, and I received Essex probably five times as an email coming through. So they do, it comes, it comes around a lot, um, and that's a great way to get the information out, but, and it was also on school spring, so if, which is a tool, an online tool that many educators use. So if you, I went on as myself, not as a superintendent, but as my, in my personal school spring, and Googled different ways, or searched different ways to get to Essex High School, and it always came up. So it was all, it was there. I do that every now and then to make sure that we, anybody else can see what we're advertising. Um, so we did have a hundred and forty-two respond to the survey, which I thought was, that was pretty good. Right off, we had, it was in a matter of minutes, we had like seventy-five people. It was like, it was, it was great. So I broke down to the, um, who answered what, or what their, their role was. Um, and then the screening committee will meet tomorrow. This is made up of administrators, central office, and Essex High School and a C T E administrator, so we'll look through the applicants using the information that was put together through the, um, Nezdek report, and also our job description. So the screening committee has all the applicants, they also have those two tools, so as they were looking through them, they, um, could do that, and then our discussion will happen tomorrow, hoping that we can have, um, three or four to send through to interview. The interview committee, as Tilly and Laura said, they meet on Friday the thirteenth. Um, it's a facilitated workshop here at the high school. I have been asked not to go, because if I go, people, they, Nezdek, uh, people say that they'll look, that staff will look to me to answer questions, so I am removed from that situation. I'm in a courageous conversation training anyways. But Jackie Tolman will be the one that's representing from central office, so it'll be great to have her, and she was a high school principal, which I think will be really helpful in this search as well. Um, and then, so that interview committee meets for three hours, and then the interviews are scheduled, um, they also do a lot of, like, the team building, to be a real unified team, going out to see what they want, and being able to, um, I got more of the, what they'll be doing, and it's, it's a good process. I'm disappointed that I can't be there, because I'd like to replicate that and run the same thing sometime, but Jackie will have to do that for us. So the interviews are scheduled Monday, March twenty-third, most likely during the day, depending on how many we interview. I would like them at the school here, and then students to give a tour to the candidate, at like one at a time, while one's being interviewed, one's getting a tour. Um, and then the committee will recommend two or three candidates to move to the next round, which means that, um, they will come back on the thirty-first of March to meet with students, to meet with, um, in organized facilitated ways, and then staff, parents and community that evening, um, and then everybody will have a chance to fill out an exit ticket, an exit card, and then that'll be gone through, through the screening, um, committee, back to the screening committee, and then reference checks will be done, and H R, if I need help in doing reference checks. So we had eight applicants for the high school, um, from Vermont, Maryland, Connecticut, and New York, and V P A, um, said he was, Jay Nichols from the Vermont Principal Association was really surprised that we had that many, that high school principals across Vermont have been getting like three applicants, four applicants, that the pool is really shallow, and he was really surprised that we had one from Maryland and Connecticut and New York. This one is actually New York City. He was just really surprised. So I contribute that to the way that it was advertised and out there more than just going the school spring, and he asked me who we used, and he was extremely interested in that process. Um, and as I have said to people, and I always believe that this, if the search committee and the interview committee does not find a candidate, we go for an interim and we start the process earlier. I think that's an attitude you have to go into it, because you don't want to force, um, a hire, and I also want to assure you, as best as I can, the person that is hired will be supervised and evaluated by me, and I will be working extremely closely with that person, um, and being, we have a couple that are with, one that would be brand-new. Um, in one way, that's really exciting. We have great support, I think, from central office, to be able to support that person, and another way, I think, should it be. So we'll take the interview process and see, um, what we get. We have some, some great candidates. Any questions about the Essex High School? Yes?
Are there any internal candidates?
Uh, yes.
Other, other questions about the high school principal search?
I would comment and... Maybe comment, is that okay? It's not a question exactly, but, um, one thing I just, um, was put off, I guess, by the language in the report, not including they as a pronoun. It was he or she, and I think if we're really truly trying to be inclusive as a district, that the materials that we receive, and that certainly that go out into the world about who we're trying to attract, should include a, a, a third pronoun. So that's a comment to, not to you, but to Nezdek, I guess.
Yeah.
And the other is the, um, that actually the interim plan excites me, when I think about some things, about taking it slowly.
Yeah.
And not rushing to find the right person, so, um, that in mind, um, just, it could be exciting to have an interim plan, and that's just a comment.
I, um, also know that you know of, um, some assistant principal openings at the high school. We have a director of school counseling that you learned, um, in, that is retiring, all for good reasons, and moving on to either retire, be with family, um... all for good reasons and moving on to either retire, be with family, um, a better job for them and their family. So, what I've worked, um, with, it's called an interim leadership team model. So, for one year, we will use people within, or they have to apply, within the school so that a new principal can come in and they will figure out, is it the leadership team they want? What do they need? What experience do they bring from around and be able to start fresh with that? Hire people they want, and those people for one year will go back into whatever they were doing this year. Um, and I've worked with HR, we're going to hold that job, job for them and we will hire from, let's say it's a math teacher. We'll hire a math teacher for a year, um, and have them. I think it is a great way to develop some leadership as well, some leadership skills in people. Um, again, we know, I know, I will spend a lot of time at the high school next year. Jackie knows it, Erin knows, I mean, we are, we're prepared to support, um, a new leadership team. And again, I think it's kind of, it's exciting and many opportunities. I think of change as opportunity. Um, I do think it's a great opportunity. I did the interim leadership model and it, and mainly because I didn't feel like people here now should do the hiring for somebody that's going to come in new and really to be able to fit what they want and what they work through in a year, because the new principal would come in, work around a leadership model, figure out what they, that, what the school needs. Um, and hopefully we'll have a person that's experienced and, and if that doesn't happen and we're an interim model, then we will work out that, what it, what it would look like and spend a year doing that. Um, the staff did learn of the interim leadership model today, even though the positions have been posted internally for a couple of weeks.
Somebody, oh, it's kind of.
Uh, Beth, I don't see it listed in here and I'm not sure if it was something that was directed or something they may have done on their own, but Nezdeck, we've talked about before, searching for applicants who are going to have, you know, in a diverse community, we're looking for, you know, a diverse applicant pool. Um, but sometimes that can be difficult, obviously, you know, if we're just putting it out there, unless we're specifically targeting, you know, sometimes, you know, as an example, that we got at the SBA, you know, sometimes they will specifically target historically black colleges if they're looking for more diversity. Um, do you know if they did any outreach, um, to get a diverse pool of candidates or if it's just what's in here and then relied on just the general information?
It is what went out to the states and looking for that in the advertisement. I can tell you that the, that the applicants are diverse.
Okay.
Maybe that helps?
Yeah, I mean, right, like.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments about the high school principal search? Okay, you want to move on to Fleming?
So, Thomas Fleming, we have, um, it was advertised on school spring. We have, um, I gathered the staff together and worked with them, with Jackie, um, around what they feel they needed and the characteristics they could see in a principal or wanted in a principal, and that has been used for, um, a screening tool, which the candidates have already been screened, and then to develop, to develop the interview questions. The screening committee met yesterday. Um, the, they'll be, the applicants will be interviewed on Monday. Um, and then it lists the interview committee there, it's classroom teachers, support staff, special educator, school counselor, um, a parent educator, this office, school office assistant, uh, there is a parent on it. Um, and then Erin McGuire, one of the pre-K to three, I think it's Catherine. Erin McGuire and Jackie will be, um, and I'm not sure that Deb is, that's a extra if needed. I am not in that interview process. What I will step in and do and be a part of and observe is the student, staff, parents, community, um, on the 24th. It is a night of the board. It is very difficult to find a night to, I was disappointed that it was that night, but it was hard to find a night that worked for the school and the teachers to do a forum to bring the candidates back. Um, so, they'll spend most of the day with students, meeting with staff, going into classrooms. Um, when we did this at Essex Elementary, we had the candidates run a morning meeting and it was a great way to watch them, um, interact with students, watch them around students at lunchtime, so that's my, I will be there to observe all that and see that. Yep.
That's the finalists.
Finalists. Yeah, yeah. So, it would be the two or three that the committee then send on. Yep. Um, and then I will do the reference checks and again, HR, if necessary, can help. So, we had nine applicants. These are mostly from Vermont, one from Florida. Um, and according to VPA, it's pretty average for Chittenden County to get nine in an elementary. We had more when we did Essex Elementary, but we had 12. It wasn't much more, but it seems to be, I was happy with nine, actually. And same thing, if we don't find a candidate, we'll do an interim plan. It's not easy to find a candidate.
Uh, when will, uh, we get announcement, or, excuse me, we, sorry, talking like a Fleming parent.
Because you are.
Yeah. Uh, when will the announcements go out about the, uh, 24th date? I mentioned that only because.
Yep.
The last hiring process at Hiawatha, the parents got sent the information about meeting Catherine at 3:00.
Oh.
The day of for a 6:00 PM meeting that night. So.
Yeah, that's.
You know, I realize different administration, but I just want to make sure there's not.
This will go out by the end of this week. I'm, my plan was, I thought I would have time to sit down with Ben to work on that today. I did not. By the end of the week.
Okay.
I'll say that. Sooner.
Thank you. Just like, more than like three hours would be awesome to fangirl.
And same with the high school. That one has to get out as well.
Any other questions or comments on the Fleming principal search? Kim?
There's no particular requirement that there be a set number set, put forth, like if there is one that the committee feels is the only one, there might be one that goes forward. There could be three that goes forward. Okay, so there's no.
There isn't a set, and I think it's better not to go in with like, I want three.
Yep. It's risky.
But it's nice to narrow them down too, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I have time to three. And if it's one, that's what we have.
Right.
The, um, the Fleming search committee, are they using the same definition that I read in the Nezdeck?
Nezdeck, no, because it's a, um, I did that one and I did not put it in a forum of, um, I don't, I didn't think it was appropriate to share with the public. I put together a form, exactly what the teacher said. I did not reword it and I gave it back to them and the screening committee is using it. So, I did not write up a report. No, it's not Nezdeck, no.
What we were looking for.
The job description.
Okay.
So, there is a elementary job description as well. I can share that with you, if you would like to see the elementary, it's probably on our website as well.
I, I don't know, I thought that.
It's different than that.
Thought the ideals of what, what was expressed there were.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell you that the top things for the Fleming was communicator, um, visible in classrooms, wanting an instructional leader, those kind of pretty typical things came out, but especially a communicator, and the same with the high school. Those are like top, um, priorities that folks, folks are looking for.
Okay. Ready to move on? Okay, testing updates, Liz, I'll start with you.
Um, I gave, I provided the, uh, budget communications update that Ben prepared. I don't know if anyone, if everyone had a chance to see it. Um, thank you, Ben, for doing that, really helpful. That's what our team has been focused on is budget. So, I guess if there are any questions about that or suggestions, um, our team is focused right now till the vote on, on budget pretty much. Um, so, if there's any, any ideas, any suggestions, anything we're not doing, I, I, again, um, I just said it, but thank you to Ben, who's been really thorough in, in helping us achieve our goals of communication.
I did get an email from, someone from the Essex Reporter today that I have phoned her to Liz. He's clearly been trying to look at some of our budget materials on the website and so, that's good.
So, we have the, um, the final financial statements. We want to get those posted to the website, so, because they're referenced and they're a reference material for people reviewing our financial status. So, we're going to send out a copy to the board. We're going to post it to the web publicly and then on the 24th or however the board chooses to do their agenda planning, we'll bring it to the board and, uh, trying to arrange some availability from our auditors to spend 10, 15 minutes with the board to do that. So, I just wanted to let you know, it, it will be public, you'll see it first. Uh, it will go as saying that it has not been accepted by the board on the public version until the board takes action.
Okay.
Is there any reservations with that? It's just, we referenced that financial statements can be found on our website.
Yeah.
It's one of the things that's in the annual report, so we're not publishing 20 pages of audit there.
Right.
Okay. Anything else from you, Liz?
I don't think so.
Okay. Kim, negotiations?
I've, um, done a first exchange with the teachers and the support staff in our second meeting with teachers, and, um, we, again, have the good fortune of having really respectful dialogue and, um, the first exchange is really to ask questions and understand what's being asked on each side, so all three of our negotiating team are there for that. And then in our second follow-up meeting with teachers, we really just had, um, further dialogue to understand the issues in front of each of us and some nice collaborative conversation and problem solving around that. So, I, I think we're fortunate. I think, um, one of the teachers has acknowledged that, that's newer to the process, um, because they, as well as we, know that this, that version of negotiation, it will get hard, it always does at some point, but it remains respectful and appreciative. And, um, in her, uh, more fresh perspective, because she was newer to the team, um, made that comment as well. And, you know, we did try and limit the number of issues on both sides so that, um, we could concentrate our efforts and not have it all over the entire contract, and so, yeah, we will keep you posted and, um, at this point, we, it's nice to have begun on both, actually.
Questions or comments? Brendan?
Can you, uh, just remind us who is on the negotiation team for the teachers?
It is, um, Mike Gilbert. Oh, the three of us. Mike Gilbert and Peekard and Karen Jeffries and Betsy Sinek. So, Betsy's newer to the process. Um, and, and had the opportunity to just, you know, fresh eyes on it. I think we've somewhat, I don't think we take it for granted, I think we really do appreciate it every time, and Deb brings this incredible wealth of knowledge and real-time ability to be responsive with data and information that all sides trust, and I think that is to be envied. Um, we are really lucky.
Is Mike and Deb either lead or?
They are. They are.
Not just lucky, you've worked really hard. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. It's a, it's a, you know, you don't want to say it's a pleasure because it's not exactly all of that, but, nor would they say that. It just is so much more pleasurable than it could be. And, and if this is work that has to get done, it's really nice to do it in this way, so.
Thank you, Kim, and thanks for the hours that you put into that effort. It's appreciated. So, local and statewide updates, um, do you want to start with coronavirus? No, you, you've had enough of it. So, we did receive today from the SBA, um, some information about what the Agency of Education and the Department of Health are recommending. We know that Beth is spending inordinate hours on this along with her colleagues. Um, I guess if you, I would encourage you to read the information that we've received. Um, but beyond that, does anyone have any specific questions? Brendan?
I know you mentioned you're investigating the possibility of being able to do certain things online. Is that, um, something that's realistic and if so, like, how comprehensive? What, what might that look like versus, you know, versus, is it like an all-day thing? Is it a part-day thing? Like, how, how's that plan coming together?
I don't have a lot of answers for you because it was in the brainstorming stage when we got together last Friday. Um, I think we were ahead of the game to get together to even think about that. Our new director of technology and innovation brought some great ideas. Um, we already do and use virtual learning here at the high school. Um, that's an opportunity to expand upon classes and use them. Um, we talked about a Google classroom and how easy would that be for classroom teachers and when would we do that training? If you close school, can you bring them in for a day? That's probably not, you know, I mean, so it's trying to figure out the best way to do that and what does it look like for different age groups and is it, you know, they're in school, but five and a half hours of instruction? Does, what does that look like when it's one-on-one? Is it an hour? Do you send K kids home with books and math games? Is somebody there to play with them, you know, do that stuff? So, there's a lot of questions that aren't answered. Um, that probably doesn't make you feel good, but we are thinking about it and we're, we're working. Brian can probably add to it as well. There are, we have looked into all the tablets and making sure that that's, um, they can be sent home, which we know we have one-to-one, but just making sure, like Peter was like, okay, I'm new, do we have enough really? Um, and then also, I asked the question about families that don't have internet at home, what can we do for them? And there are, I can't remember what he called it. It's a gadget that can be sent home. Um, so, we would work with that as well.
We're, the instructional continuity, you know, we've never, again, we've, no one in the state has addressed such a situation under the current confines of needing to have 75% of your students receiving an, on average, five and a half hours of instruction, which are the requirements to count a student day. For an extended period of time, you know, averages help us sometimes with things like half-days and other things like that, but for an extended period of time, that seems like a big ask to come out of the gate and be able to provide meaningful instruction for 75% of our students for five and a half hours. So, we're trying to ask that question of, well, what is one, one-on-one kind of element and how does that work? And no one's asked the question, so we don't have answers yet. We are also switching over and need to look at business continuity and we need to understand what it looks like to be able to continue to process payroll, transact business, what are the essential services, who can we move at home? How do we take preemptive of doing, um, in-out job sharing so that if there is an infection, that it doesn't go through a staff of two and then you have a staff of zero? So, we're trying to gameplay all those things and again, trying to pull solutions from private industry. Colleges and universities are really out in front on this. Um, though, we'll see what the actual implementation and execution is of going to 100% online in a matter of a week. Um, so, yeah, we're just, we're trying to game plan and trying to be really restrictive of trying to bring something to a foregone conclusion of all details when we don't know which one, so we're continuing to try to qualify.
Is one of the options that you're considering, that is providing no online opportunities?
It does.
I mean, just.
We have talked about that.
Just spinning it up, you know, is, there's so much effort.
Right.
I think we tried to, I think at the end of our discussion, we began to prioritize instruction continuity and started to look, and it was just a, it was a stream of consciousness and brainstorming, but to look at graduating seniors as having some priority in a continuation of instruction so that this doesn't have consequences that stretch well beyond the school year into the next academic pursuit, or their career pursuit, or their apprenticeship, or their internship that they may have lined up. So that's where we started to say, like, where can we, who do we have makeup opportunity with and who don't we have makeup opportunity with?
And also, we're empathetic and thinking about support staff that wouldn't be paid for those days. How do we do that? What's, so we're thinking about that as well. Deb has really been thinking about that. And we've been thinking about families with food insecurities. If we close, how do we continue for kids that really need that lunch?
And in the interim, we're looking at changing of food service delivery to try to mitigate exposure to contaminants or virus. We're continuing to go. And we're facing the same shortages of disinfectants and wipes and hand sanitizers as I'm sure you all are personally in your workplaces are. So we're looking and trying to source that material, but we're in competition with hospital, public health organizations, colleges, schools.
We did make-
Not even being a single-coast kind of situation, is the supply chain throughout everything right now is compromised. We have to watch out to make sure that our food supply chain doesn't get compromised. Through Reinhardt is a primary provider to over 200 schools in the state of Vermont. Depending upon their driver shortage, warehouse shortages, and so forth, could start to compromise. We may have trigger events in which we're not closing due to an outbreak in school, but we're closing because we can no longer satisfactorily kind of ensure that the school is ready to learn it.
We meet with leadership team tomorrow, and we'll talk about field trips and all of that. The Vermont Department of Health said there is no travel, as you know, restrictions in, you know, domestic United States. But do we feel as a leadership team that it's putting our community at risk if we send kids? We did, we have a New York City trip coming up. There's other things. The New England Music Festival has been canceled. There's a dance contest in Connecticut that's been canceled since like this morning when I met with regional superintendents. We did, as a regional superintendents, agree that all international student travel will be canceled from this point through the end of the year. It just, we weren't ready to take that risk. And then to determine, well, that's a safe country. That's not. So, and that's been hard. I've already received phone calls, but both positive and negative. So many are really supportive, and then I.
It's, it's awkward.
It is.
Kim, Ian, and Patrick?
My question was answered. It was about online learning for people who don't have internet.
Two things. First, Beth, specifically, I want to thank you because you were way out ahead of this a week ago. When I came to see Beth at the polling places, I just stopped in for a friendly visit, like for 30 seconds, and she was working on it. And the communication has actually been very helpful. I've had multiple community members come up and say that the schools have been great about sending out information. That was back when, honestly, it really didn't seem like the Department of Ed or the Agency of, you know, excuse me, the Agency of Ed and the Department of Health, it didn't really seem like they were giving a lot of guidance. And I think people were looking for something. So really appreciative of your leadership there. The second is, it's more, kind of crosses into the local as well. Elaine Haney, the Select Board Chair, and I had spoken last week. And I'm going to go over to Town Hall tomorrow to speak with Evan. Speaking really generally about a task force, force, task team is probably a better term, a little less forceful. But they want, they want school involvement, which is one of the reasons why I would be, you know, a part of that. So would there be someone, I'm thinking Brian, you know, would be the best person, but me, I don't know if Beth, you would want to assign someone or take it yourself. But I think that what they want is they want the ability to know if we're going to close, what needs to do, because the town right now is looking at the same things that we are, you know. And the senior center is, you know, like a very, yeah, really, right, vulnerable population. The senior busing is a very vulnerable, you know, point of contact. The libraries, you know, are a very vulnerable location where a lot of seniors go. So, you know, they're looking at how they're going to need to start limiting access, potentially shutting those down. And if the schools are going to be closing at any point, they want, you know, I guess these want there to be like a hand-in-hand communication.
Yes. One of us will be on that. Just let us know when the task force, task team. So is your first meeting tomorrow and then?
Yeah. It is, it is not official yet.
Okay, okay. Yes, one of us will be there.
So, right, I just wanted to speak now about it. That way, if I go tomorrow to Evan, I can say, yes, you know, the school district is on board. They will have a person there. You know, the town has emergency management plans, and we've been getting that information. You know, Chief Gary, the head of the Essex Police, is our local, like crisis management person. So they've been reviewing all of their plans for anything, you know, dramatic that may happen. But I think before, obviously, it gets to that point, you know, they just want to have plans in place for unexpected closures and what have you.
Right. And thank you for the thank yous on the communication. If I, Brian and Ben have been amazing as well. Ben, on a Sunday, when I was in a panic and writing, I was able to send it to him. And Monday morning, it was all edited and ready to go. So he was even, this is kind of funny. I went to the UVM finals on, I can't remember, Saturday or Sunday, they've all run together. And he had his computer, he was doing stats, and he had his computer. And he goes, this is school. I'm going to keep it open just in case something happens. I'm like, okay, and I'll be with my phone. We're like eight people away. He's awesome. He's awesome. Yes.
3934 at the half.
You, Kim?
Yes.
Well, and the fluidity of this situation is marked by us in the last half hour while we've met. We've been informed of a driver shortage from mountain transit. We've instituted a contingency plan. We've communicated by email and phone, wrote to all families. We've posted onto our website, and we have an email to all administrators. So.
You'll have more coming because it's confusing if you ride the red bus.
Yes, it is. Thank you. I emailed about that.
And so, you know, the quality of work is going to be based upon the time period that we have to put together. And sometimes it's less than 12 hours before we're rolling buses and need to adjust it. So I think it's evident that we're pretty resilient, but there's just too many pressure points right now that start to go in to our, you know, even special ed is primarily, you know, we have a lot of contractors that do in special ed. We have the Howard Mental Health Services that are social workers in our schools. You know, we're, in some places, we're one person deep to serve a school community. And that's how we function. And so we're going to be trying to come up with contingency plans and just appreciate people's patience as we go through the unknown.
That, Ian.
If we have the unknown, unless we're going to be doing our, our annual meeting and voting. Is there some contingency from Secretary of State, from legislature? We legally have to have this meeting? Do we postpone it? What do we, if, if things are closed down? I mean, if, from what I understand, things can be going smoothly, and then suddenly we get slammed and we close? Or are we not? I mean, it's, it's all, you know, it's all toss of the dice at this point in time. So do we need to get an opinion? Are we in the process of getting an opinion? What do we do?
I think it's a good point. We should find out. I mean, one of the things that I've been coaching people on is that the first time we think of what a scenario might be that we need to think about is to try to understand when we'd like that to be answered and when we absolutely have to have it answered. Because we're in a situation where every minute's giving us more information. So we really don't want to answer any questions.
I'm just getting in the queue to get an answer.
Right. Because my question is right now, it's warned.
I'll take a number.
And by state statute-
I don't care for a number. I just want to know what our legal-
Changing it may have a 30 to 40 day window. So we'll actually, we'll pick that up right away if it has that kind of window.
Right. Well, it's per discussion I had earlier today. So it's, I'm just-
I mean-
Same vote, same vote, you know.
We know in the states that are voting today and voting next week, they're taking precautions. But, you know, it also depends on what the situation is around you, which we can't predict what things are going to look like a month from now. I've got Andre, Liz, have you had your hand up? No. You're okay. Kim.
Yeah, because there's, there's so many parameters for the elections. Like, how many people have to show up for the physical meeting for it to count as a meeting? Is it just the quorum of the board needs to show up? Because then we don't have to risk-
Also, we have to make a motion.
Right. So then we don't have to risk the community, if there aren't a lot of like controversial articles. We could mail ballots to everybody theoretically and encourage voting by mail if it seems like encouraging people to avoid-
Yeah. We don't need to solve it tonight. No. But it is worth thinking about. Okay. Other local and statewide updates. Kim?
I was just going to suggest as we're capturing all these questions, and if others were to come up, the State Board of Ed meeting is next Wednesday. We will be getting an update. There are some of these wavery issues and other things that might, needs some guidance. So if we have questions that are coming up, and it seems as though we've been in front on communications, we may be in front on some of our thinking or anticipating questions. I'd be happy to just bring those to that table and see, you know, at least invite direct answers to those questions from the Secretary or the agency, or if they're board issues, board issues responses.
Do we know how many petitions were taken out? The deadline was yesterday. Pat, do you have an update on that for school board?
I know that my friend in the morning on Monday, there were two other completed petitions that were in. Myself, Scott Brown is actually in the audience. And Aaron Knox is a third. So there will be a contested race at the very least with three, and there may be-
And Robbins is in also.
So.
Thank you.
Brendan turned his in today for his seat. And Andre, you've turned yours in. Okay. Yeah. Thank you to everyone who's running. Okay. Statewide, there's a hearing tomorrow on the waiting study. I can't go. I don't, I have considered emailing to see if I could testify by phone. But what does the board think? It's four to six.
It would be outside the window if I could make it.
Testify by phone.
Okay. I'll email the committee assistant tonight, see if I can testify by phone.
That'd be great.
There are a group of districts who benefit from the changes, who are being very aggressive right now. Press conferences, letters, opinion letters, and the deep digger. They're clearly putting on a big push, asking that this happened this year. So I do think there need to be some different voices on the table. One of the things I've been thinking about, and I would love your reaction, is I've been thinking about saying that I think they need to think carefully about how this interacts with Act 46. One of our communities, Westford, would be in a very different situation in terms of the waiting study if they weren't merged. So some of these small rural districts that didn't merge, are they going to be benefiting from not merging? Are those reasonable questions to raise?
Yes.
Very much so. And I know another merged community down in the Bennington area had in the report where it's pre-merge would have benefited, and in the merged district will not. That being said, and one of my fellow BSBA board members sits down there and said, they have been doing their budgeting and resourcing to get, seek equity across their new merged district. So they're doing that hard work. But in fact, they will be on sort of the loser side of the waiting study at this point, where they have a, one of those schools that would be particularly in need and would have on its own benefit. But I just, I think there's so much unknown, and there is clearly no way to put those resources to work this year in approved budgets. That is just, I, I understand the sense of urgency those people are feeling, but it is not able to do anything that would be productive this year. And it seems shortsighted.
Yeah, I would echo that point. That was in your letter about not rushing into things when budgets are already approved. Like, I, I think if we're talking about equity, we're not just talking about our district. We need to acknowledge that there are districts that have larger struggles than us with English language learners and poverty. And I think implementing a system to make sure that financial benefits going to those districts actually translate into additional resources for those students is essential before funds should be reallocated. Because we demonstrate what we do for our student population with funds as they currently are. And if suddenly things are going to change, they shouldn't change before we have a mechanism for demonstrating that it is producing the desired result.
Okay. Thanks. That's helpful. Well, I will make an attempt to testify by phone. And if that doesn't work, perhaps I'll compose a second letter. You know, that maybe what gets suggested to me is that I submit something in writing. We'll see.
And they'll accept written testimony, put people waiting study in the subject line. But I would try, Martha, because I think you know this body of works inside and out, and your former colleagues, I think very much so appreciate hearing your perspective. So if it works to both read and provide it written, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I'll try. Okay. Anything else on local and statewide updates? Okay. I think we are finished. Take a minute to fill out your meeting evaluation if you have something to say. And we'll see you in two weeks on March 24.